Hey, hello everyone and welcome to the January ninth meeting of the Select Board. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the first meeting of 2023 and just want to let people know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable television. And I just want to go around and have everybody introduce themselves for the record for our quorum tonight.
Jamie Steadens.
Mark and Lynn.
I'm Dottefull Genetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
Connor Reed, our town administrator, Michael Blanchard, assistant town administrator, and Elizabeth Heg, executive assistant to the Select Board. So first up tonight, we have one day liquor licenses. For the first one is Stonehill College Women's Basketball Alumni Celebration, Martin Auditorium, 320 Washington Street. And it's for Saturday, January 21st, 2023, 3 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM. Stonehill has applied for this one day license for their alumni celebration. A police detail is not required for this event. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve this one day license?
So I'll move, Barger.
Second, Lynn.
Barger, Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Second, Stonehill College Snowflake Soiree at the Sally Blair Field House at Stonehill College, Sunday, January 22nd, 2023. I'm sorry, Saturday, January 21st, 2023, 10:00 PM to Sunday, January 22nd, 2023, 1:00 AM. They've applied for this one day beer and wine license for the Snowflake Soiree and an Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Can I get a motion?
So I'll move, Barger.
Second, Lynn.
Barger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Before I go on to the next one, I just want to mention for the record that select person Jen Stacy is not here tonight. So we'll get that. I know that Elizabeth will get that in a minute anyway. So next up is the action and discussion for the Blanche A. Ames Elementary School, Great Builders, for the project change order number 10.
So while Walter gets settled up there, just for the board's benefit, this is another one of our change order bundles approved under the technical review committee process that was adopted by this board and the school planning committee years back when the construction or planning and construction was underway. And so the next two items, so item two and three are related to the project. The item in front of me right now is that change order bundle that Walter will walk us through. And then we thought it would be a good time, now that the building is substantially complete and occupied on schedule, to have PMA just give an overview of that, where we stand and what the next six months look like. So Walter.
Absolutely. So eighty-six percent of the contract time has elapsed as of today. Twenty-three point six percent of owner contingency will be expended with the execution of change order 10. Twenty-five point five percent of owner contingency is held in reserve for non-risk pending any resolution. Change order 10 is in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars and ninety cents. And I will take you guys through the PCOs that make up change order 10.
This is in your packets as well, just so you. Sorry, Walter.
Yeah, sorry. PCO 86 is a time materials verification for I and R Mechanical to demolish and remove the existing HVAC unit, HVAC unit at the wastewater treatment plant. Sorry, as everyone knows here, wastewater treatment plant upgrades were included in the scope. However, the mechanical unit replacement was not in the original scope, but was ultimately decided to be reported as part of the project. That is on order still. There's a long lead time, I believe it was thirty-two weeks or so. It was ordered a while back, but the demolition of that HVAC unit wasn't included. So this PCO covers the demolition and removal of that structure in the back of the building. PCO number 091A, RFP 36 for the gas valve. We had originally thought we had double purchased the gas valve at the, one of the gas valves at the kitchen. Turns out that the gas valve that we took the credit for, we made the opposite one. It had another piece, it had another solenoid and a monitor in it, a CO monitor. We needed that one. So we needed to add back in this cost of $1,200 to make sure that this was operating properly in the kitchen. Good news is that was back in and has been seen by the border of health and the kitchen is working. PCO 117A, Fire Department Standpipe Connections, TNM scope for the finish work only. If you remember back a few months ago, we had a change order for adding standpipe connections. Not required by code, but a request from the Fire Department and a completely reasonable one. Those got installed. This is just cleanup work at where they went in. They were in some tile walls, they were in some finished areas. So TNM work that PMA tracked at both locations where those standpipe connections went in, $3,086. PCO 123 for RFP 44, changes to frames at A106, A107, these are door frame changes that were required to meet fire ratings. I'm sorry, at window frames that needed to meet fire ratings at the front. The two windows were not originally called to meet fire ratings. So the TNM scope to install those and purchase those frames was $11,100. PCO 140, RFI number 210, venting at the grease traps. Venting was not shown on the plumbing drawings, but it was needed. So this PCO was negotiated. It was $6,080, that was plumbing scope. PCO 142, RFP 31R1. This is for an additional stone path, stone walkway path out of the courtyard at the building. So right now we have a double gate coming out of the courtyard with a concrete block. This is for additional egress, not code required, but the architect and in communication with a few different people felt that it could be good to have a third egress in there. We have two coming out with a double gate. This is a third one in case. So that was $875, it's pretty complete. PCO 145, Phase 1B telethon duct tape chipping. This was an unforeseen condition when we got over to this location. Sort of the school, the Blanche Ames School is tied in, they're fiber through the middle school. Comes out of the building, hits a manhole where it turns into, turns down the new road to head to the new building. Inside there, there was concrete poured all over, at the old one, there was concrete poured all over. And then in order to get in there to make that run, we needed to chip the concrete around it. And then we also had to chip the concrete at the entrance to ensure that the new manhole cover would fit on top of it. So that was tracked on TNM and taken care of. That was in the amount of $933. PCO 148, stair landings, MTC resilient tile. This was for the landings at all the stairs, so I believe six staircases. We have nice resilient ridues and treads at the tops of the landings. We actually didn't call for any material there, it was just a concrete finish. Created kind of a tripping hazard. So we put resilient tile there, it wasn't owned, it was just an added scope.
Over what's MTC?
MTC.
Multi-tiltile?
I'm looking for help on that one.
Composit, multi-tilt composite.
Stair landings, is it multi-tilt composite that I wrote in there?
No, that's just my head.
Yeah. I can, I can get that, I can look that up, what that is. But it is resilient floor tile and it matches what's in this school. PCO 150, bird screens at overflow drains. As you'll see as you're walking around the building, some really nice, and they're not decorative, they do look decorative, brass overflow drains. And it's really to prevent animals from getting in there or any type of insects, birds, anything like that. They're lower to the ground, so you do have that risk of something getting in there. So these are drains at those locations. They are all around the building. That was $3,397. PCO 153, remobilization for bottle fillers. There was eighty, I believe there are about eighty-six or eighty-eight bottle fillers in the school. These are not the chilled water bottle fillers that are in the corridors. These are actually at all sinks in the classrooms. So the teacher doesn't have to send students out to the hallway to get water unless they feel they want them to be able to do that. They can fill it in the classroom. The only difference is it's not chilled in the classroom. But these were actually not able to be purchased via what was specced because of the sink that was specified. So we had to get a different make. The plumber was able to get a third of them from his supply guy. They had to order the rest of them from, I believe, from Amazon and they were backordered. So the plumber did have to wait and then come back and install them. So this was a remodel fee for coming back and installing, I believe, two-thirds of the bottle fillers throughout the entire school. PMA, this was a lot higher cost originally because it included an upcharge for those bottle fillers. We did get that knocked off. They were able to purchase them. But it was a remodel fee for the plumber to come back after he had really already finished his scope. PCO 157, core drilling at the landscape curving. At the front of the school, at the bus loop, there is vertical granite curving that's tied in and it's proud of the concrete that's abutting the school as you come out. It prevents a car from coming up over the curb. But it was going to hold water. We actually needed to make these kind of drains to get them out into the street, to get them to the roadway. There wasn't any, so this was an after effect, kind of an aftermarket install of the curbs. We had them drill holes down that area. That was $4,498. PCO 161 was RFP 48, light shelves and, I should say, changing table changes. But it was a little repetitive. We had actually specified adult changing tables. They were unfortunately ordered. We needed to get child size, they, adult size. We would have used them, but they did not fit in the bathrooms. They would have made the bathrooms non-ADA accessible and the doors wouldn't have been able to close. So we had to get smaller ones. And then there was also a credit in there for light shelves. So there was quite a bit of washing out in this PCO. But this is really for the purchase of those six, sorry, ten changing tables that need to be installed. They're powered, the power's there, they just need to be installed at this point. We did receive them. So that was $6,785. Those go on all the pre-K rooms, the nurses' office bathroom. So all the pre-K bathrooms, the nurses' office bathroom and developmental skills? Developmental skills room on the second floor. PCO 166, comm room hardware. This is a hardware change to be, to ensure that students and staff will be able to open the door from the inside. It was tracked on TNM, $1,290. Last two, PCO 167, filter changes during building demo. Kind of belts and suspenders item here, but always good to do this. The mechanical contractor during demolition will be providing filter changes once a week during the demolition-only portion of the demo. So when that starts, once a week, they'll be changing the filters on all the mechanical units. So that's what this $44,091 covers.
Just to make sure we're separating the things out. So as part of a project, I'm sure any parent with a kid going to Blanche Ames is kind of acutely aware of the multi-phase approach, but when we talk about demolition, we're talking about Parkview.
Yep.
Right, because Parkview is going to be demolished this spring or actually pretty quickly.
Yep.
And so this was not required and isn't required, but we, but was spelt that it would just be, to your point, belt and suspenders to ensure good air quality inside of the Blanche Ames School that any exterior filtration units that are pulling air in for where students are actively learning will be changed weekly above and beyond what's required through the duration of any demolition outside.
Great idea.
Makes sense.
That was the TRC, they had a, that was a great idea by them. And then PCO 169, framing and tile repairs at Stair 1 entrance per architectural field report. A little bit of a discrepancy between the architectural drawings and the finishes. So this was a $4,400 change that was reviewed by PMA and Perkins Eastman and then approved by the TRC. It's for tile work and finish carpentry work as well. That was $4,415. So total of the change order 10 is 99,104.90. Happy to take any questions from anyone on the board.
Walter, can you remind everyone where we stand with the bid savings, please? Because I always imagine if you are somebody who watches one of these meetings only very rarely and you tune into this, this seems like a strange exercise to go through a laundry list of new spending and can seem like it's the opposite of what, where this project is, which is performing quite well on COs and on the bid savings. So I always feel it's good to recount that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we are, the bid savings on this job was roughly $10 million. We allocated 1.4 of the bid savings, which was 1.49 of the bid savings, which was always going, a portion of going to be allocated towards the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. So of that, of those bid savings of roughly 10 million, about 1.5 have been expended for the wastewater treatment plant, but nothing else has been touched on the bid savings. And then of the 3.4, 3.7 million of owner construction contingency, I believe.
Based on your memo, you've spent 24% of that.
Yep. So that is owner contingency, so soft costs and hard costs. Yep, we've expended 24% and we have about 25 to 26% held in risk.
So about 50% of the.
Is the maximum exposure?
Is the maximum, if everything were to be paid out, correct?
And that doesn't include, does that include the furniture fixtures and?
The furniture fixtures is in the budget. That, the, that also includes what was expended as part of the additional FFNE purchases.
Okay.
So yes, that does include that.
So how long, when, how long does, does this fund stay open until after the building is officially completed? Do you leave the contingency open for another six months in case of unforeseen things or?
Really up to the school planning committee and the Select Board.
And you would be advising based on a completion of the project and outstanding.
Yeah, absolutely.
You would have to make a calculated decision on that based on, you know, if you still have 20% owner contingency outstanding pending resolution, then you're going to want to really kind of expeditiously pursue those and make some judgment calls on what can be resolved versus what should be paid and work towards closeout with finance department.
And then the last piece of that would be your MSBA reimbursement. So I think we've talked about it quite a few times, just for as a reminder. MSBA stocks their reimbursement at 95%. I don't have that number right in front of me. But once they reach reimbursement of 95% of their max grant, they start to reimburse and then the town does not receive any further reimbursement. So that final 5% doesn't come until final audit. So that would, everything would need to be closed out.
That incentivizes you to close that expeditiously so you don't dilate.
And how long does that usually take? Is it a month, six months, a year?
So it's a minimum 10 months after the project's complete.
Okay.
So that would be at the minimum 10 month after April 28th of this coming year.
So you're looking at roughly a year from now. And it would be the soonest you're closing out.
Probably more than that based on the MSBA schedule because then we need to make sure we have all the documentation lined up for them. So we'll have everything that we can lined up for them, but some things that linger, some LEED certifications, some final closeout docs, the paperwork, as more money gets spent, we actually have to tell them before we can submit anything that we are done spending any money out of the project. So it's kind of a back and forth between the town and the PMA and MSBA saying, we're done. This is it, here's the full package of everything we've spent. So that's going to say, yeah, it is very incentivizing to close it out as fast as you can, but you want to make sure you get everything done correctly.
You don't want to miss anything.
Nope, nope, not at all. But we've been very diligent on that, so.
Jamie, do you have any comments, questions?
No, thank you, Walter, for the very thorough.
Mark?
Same, thank you, very thorough, no question.
I just have a question about timing with the demolition of Parkview.
It's going to be in this presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's why we added this.
I just want to say, I don't know how you did it to be one step ahead of every crisis that, you know, was felt industry-wide for, for chain, chain of product and just, you just seemed to really, we were, we were really ahead of everything by literally one step. And it really made a big difference because when I read about some communities, when they got caught up with the supply chain disruption and then the costs of things increased. So being on the school planning committee, I never thought that I would ever learn or know any of the things that you talked about there. And really, you know, at first I thought it just seems like another, another bureaucratic layer when you're building a school to have all of these people involved. But the more that I thought about it, you know, we really, there's so many pieces and parts to this and nuances that all these extra sets of eyes really, really make a big difference. And for a public project that you can't make mistakes on this, you can't have a do-over or, you know. So I'm really impressed with the work that everybody has done on the team to get this to where we are now and to get it in on time, under budget. All right?
The board, they'd be willing to make a motion to approve that change order number 10.
So I'll move, Barger.
Second, Lynn.
Barger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. So next we have KBA and PMA consultants, project update on the municipal facilities replacement, police-fire DPW.
I'm Dotte, I apologize, we have both projects being updated tonight.
Oh, oh, I didn't.
Item three.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
I'll be quick, I promise.
So this is PMA project update, Blanche Ames Phase 1A, building substantially complete and Phase 2 project schedule, look ahead.
So we'll just take you guys through some spaces. So construction photo progress update. On the left you see the professional development room of Blanche Ames. So we've had a lot of meetings in the RO, professional development room. I'm sure this will get a lot of great community use. You can see Parkview in the background. It overlooks the green roof, it's right next to the media center on the second floor. And it also overlooks the CAF 2. On the right, you'll see the courtyard I was speaking of. The stone path is actually behind the wood erbola. It leaves from the left of the wood erbola, so that was part of the change order. And then you see the double gates on the left with one of them open right there. But this space is really great. It's very musically inclined, arts inclined. There's no place structures, but there are a multitude of things to do. There's rain chains that have water running down. What you're looking at is actually a place where water runs down like a river into a drain that's actually under that bridge right there. So it runs from both sides off of those canopies. It's really cool, cool to see when it's raining outside. On the left-hand side, you see a typical classroom at Blanche Ames with the Promethean board and the Epson projector and all the furniture in place. The teachers have done a great job setting up their room. They all look different, but they look great. Typical corridor, this is at the entryway where students will eventually get in from the bus loop coming in. The gym doors are on the right. Then you enter into the cafeteria as you're walking straight through. Here's a picture of CAF 2, the larger of the cafeterias, and CAF 1, the smaller of the cafeterias. You can see the platform on the left with the panels behind it and the dropdown screen for the projection screen. On the right, you can see the short platform. The teaching kitchen is actually up in the back right. The book vending machine is not in this picture, but the Parkview book vending machine is back there as well. And then you see the projector, projection screen for that location as well. You can see, I believe his name is Paz, that's the logo for the school at the gymnasium floor. You can see the gymnasium wall pads, the small chinup bars, the basketball hoops, scoreboard, shot clocks. And you can actually see the, that feature wall open between the CAF 2 and the gymnasium. Up, up on the right, you see the outdoor terrace, the outdoor classroom. Outside of the media center, so you see the high walls with the railings and the planters. And then you can see the green roof in the background again, you can see Parkview.
Walter, I just want to point out, I think that, that pause in the middle of the floor was, was produced by Abe Kempner, a graduate of Oliver Ames High School.
I believe that's correct, yep. So I think that person may have worked with the principal and superintendent and the architect as well. So a couple milestones and updates, we want to let you guys know when it happened, especially for the community. The move, so Parkview move, but also all of the moves, which was Center School, RO Hall, Central Administration and Parkview took place from November to December. Took place at night, took place during the day, it took place all over the, all over the place. Isaac's Moving did a great job for us. They were really wonderful to work with, I think everyone was very happy with them. Teachers were unpacking more or less the start of December with some help from the town and setting up their classrooms. So they had a great jump. They had almost the entire month of December to set up their classrooms. And I would say 95% of the building was set up before January 3rd, if not before December 25th, which was great to see. FFNE and IT, 99% of the FFNE IT is in the building. There's some small punch list items. I know there's a couple pieces of furniture that we haven't received. Nothing that is stopping any teaching from taking place. They're just various chairs, seats or desks, just one-offs, maybe missing from one or two rooms. We've been able to move back and forth between a couple items, between rooms to make sure that there's no impact. But the cornline space, our FFNE procurement vendor has done a great job keeping the punch list on those items. SC and TCO, so substantial completion and temporary certificate of occupancy have been granted by both the architect and the building instructor. That was achieved on 12/20. Made, had no impact on anyone getting into the building. The school was active the next day. We had students in the building walking through from Parkview Center and RO. They did tours to see the building. And then on January 3rd was the first student in the building. So we are now into week two. Everything seems to be getting better as they're going through, which is always great to see. See a picture of the temporary certificate of occupancy. Once the build, once the project's closed out, we will obviously work to get the final certificate. It's very common to have a temporary certificate, no limitations on the building. It's just a, you know, there's a demolition project next door and they want to be aware of that. So for update for Phase 2, site work and demolition. So here's a list, or here's a plan of the demo abatement logistics plan. Currently Spooner Street coming from Center Street ends once you get to, once you get just past what we call the paper road, Benstone Road, where our great abutters have been. That's marked by that yellow line, the construction gate access. There'll be a truck wash. They'll try to keep that asphalt in place as long as they can. There'll be a truck wash area for the trucks to clean off. The location on the northwest side coming from the middle school and also the connector road, it also has a construction access, but it is fenced off, it'll stay locked. Trucks will be accessing, accessing the area via Spooner Street in and out of there. There is an emergency access to the back of the building if you come down Benstone Road to access the rear of Parkview. The fence is completely installed. The area, the trailers have been relocated, but they look like they have been because the fence is now swapped sides. So we are well within Phase 2 at this point in time. The abatement crew is in the building, working under a traditional work plan. Everything is sealed off, PMA, Perkins Eastman, no one is allowed in that building unless you have the proper licenses, clearances, authority to be in there. So everyone is, is working safely. Really, everything's been going well for the last week and a half, two weeks.
Walter, could you walk me through and just for the public's benefit? Obviously, all this is done, is this, because it's abating, is this done under an LSP? Just walk through for your layperson, what does that mean? I see there's a ton of X's up there, that looks like a dozen plus stations where air samples are being taken. I assume you're willing to do the abatement to ensure that there's not any kind of unsafe level getting out of the building, folks are going to be working. Are they doing ceiling on the inside with like negative airflow type situation? Just walk us through, that's what we want to hear.
Absolutely.
That's what you're speaking to keep everyone safe.
Absolutely. So this is all being done within the DEP guidelines, Connor's correct. There's a hazmat material specialist that is on-site watching these activities. I don't believe they're actually even in the building. They, they clear, once, once the, once the containment is set up, they clear it to make sure it's installed correctly, then they head out, but they monitor those areas. And then right now, they're in the building. So these air stations are used for the non-traditional work plan, which is after they're done inside the building. But yes, those will be in place when the non-traditional work is being taken place on the exterior. It's, you're correct, it's being done under the supervision of a hazmat specialist. That's under the designer. And then it's also being done under a licensed professional subcontractor through the general contractor as well.
Okay, so one for the designer and the owner to make sure that it's going exactly to the law too. Correct, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So just want to give everyone, I know this is kind of a boring slide, but what's going on and what the schedule looks like over the next few weeks and months. Abatement has been ongoing. They're anticipated to be done abating on January 23rd. Building demolition would follow right behind that. And demolition is targeted to be complete by February 3rd. Grading follows about a month behind that. So once the building's gone, they'll come in and regrade. in and regrade the entire area. They'll be working on drainage, fields, sidewalks, and then once those are complete, they'll follow into the playgrounds. So there's play structures, there's resilient play surface. There is the, what's under landscaping, there is all the trees, bushes, shrubs that are going to be in Phase 2. Paving, which is the new access road, which comes in in between the school sign and the corner of Parkview, kind of where the old asphalt ends. It kind of comes in right there from the north and it turns to the east as it makes that loop in front of the building. So you have that complete separation between parents and traffic and buses. That area gets gated off when the buses are not in there and it's used for play so that no one can get in there, sorry, fenced off. So paving completed by April 14th and then targeting that substantial completion date for Phase 2 on April 28th. So those are the real highlights of Phase 2.
Walter, does the landscaping, correct me if I'm wrong, that includes the installation of fields?
Correct.
Can you remind us what?
Yep.
Which fields and how many? Is it two softball and two multi-use or?
It's a, it's two softball and then an overlay in the outfield for a multi-use field.
Awesome.
And then on top of the leaching area, the leaching field, which is over near the roadway, which is where the old play area was, is also another smaller multi-use field.
Correct.
Just want to remind everyone that it's a minimum of two growing seasons as well once that gets installed for those, for, sorry, for punch list and warranty. Those need to be established, an establishment of two seasons of growing. So it will be tough, but it will work with the principals.
So the building's going to be demolished? The whole building's going to be done in like two weeks? January 23rd to February 3rd? That's only a couple of weeks, right?
Three months. I've had light bulbs out for three months.
They were in there 7:00 AM on the, on December 26th, December 27th, setting up. So they have been moving and they will move as fast as they can.
That's amazing. And you have the cameras on that?
We actually have, the cameras don't reach over there.
No.
And it's all taking place in the building.
Right.
We have one other camera set up. So camera, I'm not sure which one. One of the cameras has been turned, so you can see part view.
Yeah, because that'll be interesting to see, you know, in stages how that.
Yeah, so you will be able to see it come down based on that camera view. So two are down, one is still live.
Will there be notification to the neighbors or anything? Like, I don't know how this is done. It doesn't all come down in one piece, I would imagine. But when it does start coming down, do they know?
It's not, I know everyone pictures the, you know, swipe it all out. It's piecemeal. It's not, it's push it over, pull it down with a claw. And it's 10 feet, yeah, 10 feet by 10 feet. And then it's a lot of separating. So they're going to separate all the metal. They're going to separate all of the wood. They're going to separate all the brick and concrete into piles and then it's held in the shipping hold. So they really can't just, they want to be meticulous in how they do it and as fast as they can. They'll separate all the steel as well.
I assume there's probably, it's typical for something like this, there's like dust control measures in place.
Absolutely, yep.
I mean, it's usually, it probably won't be as bad in the winter, but.
It's actually going to benefit them a lot, but they're still required to do all of their DPW on water cannons, dust monter.
Spray it down in the event that it's, you know, floating around in the air or anything like that.
A lot easier to do now than in the summer.
In the heat of summer.
That's great.
That was everything we had on Blanche Ames. I'm happy to take any questions.
Jamie, anything from you?
I'm blown away at the saying, the building in two weeks. So I expected it to be, it could be for the building to down. This is, yeah, it's great work.
Yeah, it'll be quick.
That's incredible. I got a tour that Craig and I enjoyed a tour the other day. My wife has been on a tour. I don't know how she did that. And it's amazing. It's absolutely incredible. And those kids that are going to be students there, one day they'll realize how lucky they are. You guys have done an amazing job.
You can even hear it from them as you're walking through the building.
Yeah.
We had a chance to, on that tour, to meet a couple of teachers that were setting up their rooms. You can't imagine the excitement. They were just blown away by the opportunities they had. And we just thought it was, you guys thought everything. It was.
It was a lot of you guys thinking of everything too. All those user group meetings and the focus group meetings, the live community effort.
Yeah, hundreds, or just a note on that, we had the school planning committee meeting December 21st. And depending on how December 20th, when the final walkthrough, the second final walkthrough would be inspection staff is going, that meeting could have gone very well and very hard. And we made it there. And, you know, I went back and pulled the school planning committee meeting for five and a half years now. We've, and there's been people from all across the town government, but also the community, educators, parents, some of them even moved out in the time that it's been going on since June 2017. And voters approved this project in 2019 before COVID. And so to be able, and at that time, I went back and we pulled, we talked about this at the tax area, but we pulled the financial analysis and forecast that we gave voters. And scheduling, we gave them and basically asked them, please put your trust in us. And I'm really, first of all, thankful to voters in Easton for approving the project really overwhelmingly, but also to the whole team that we were able to deliver the building when we said we would despite a pandemic and that we're still near, you know, nine-plus million under budget is really a spectacular thing. You know, leading up to the 20th, I think there was a lot of very late nights and weekend hours for a lot of folks and quoting PMA who I appreciate. But I do want to specifically recognize and thank the town's public works and inspectional staff. They were in there nights and weekends on the regular, particularly leading up to the end, helping make sure that no matter what was outstanding, if it was an issue, it was going to get done by someone, no matter what. As well as the school custodial staff, they were there all the time as well. They were awesome. So really huge thanks to them and to all the staff at the schools for moving in throughout some pretty dreary weather and a tight schedule. So it's just, it's really, it's really great to see.
I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate you thinking to mention that comment about the public input because a lot of people think that, you know, they can't make a difference or why am I going to waste, you know, the time? I'm busy to go to that meeting to talk about my ideas. And, you know, we see it all the time firsthand that a lot of those, you know, ideas really do make a big difference. But I think in a project like this, we've seen it a lot more amplified even from the kids that, you know, talked about some of the design things that they wanted in the school and how to represent Blanche Ames in the school and a lot of that. So this is really, truly the definition of a community project.
Not to wax on, but when this started, this was only going to be replacing Center School, right? And I think even for me, when I went back, I said, oh my God, I forgot. But that's where it started. So this is with so many of those community input groups from parents and staff that, and the MSBA, of course, approving it. I mean, it just grew to be such an enormous project. That's so much good. So it's really great to see.
Excellent. All right. So we appreciate that update and we don't have any votes or anything on that.
And here is an update on the next project.
So KBA and PMA consultant project update from municipal facilities replacement, police, fire, DPW, and presentation of the final draft of the feasibility report.
Well, Greg takes a seat with the incredibly large board. That is, that is the feasibility report. You could see by looking at it why we did not send copies.
Thank you.
We are a creative community and a tree city town, so.
Before we do that, I got a note on my phone that somebody said that the audio is really bad on your part. Can we turn around that microphone and use that? Just, I didn't want to interrupt you in the middle to kind of throw you off, but.
Careful.
Just replace it, Walter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have them text you if it's better or worse or anything.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So now that we are in a new year, I wanted to have the project designers and managers come in and just give an update to the board on where we stand. We're now in schematic design and we have a final draft of feasibility and findings from a police, fire, DPW replacement project. So I wanted to kick the year off and kind of reestablish where we are in that project timeline. Greg, Walter, please.
Absolutely. So we're going to run through very quick. We have a few more incidents we had for Blanche, but not many. So we'll run through the project background, timeline for the community and for the board. We will run through feasibility study and findings, which are on here as well. We'll run through the schematic options selected and some of the key points and details on that. And then we'll run through next steps with the group. So process to date and what's taken place. 2014 was the building-wide evaluation, townwide building evaluation. A lot of that information was used in both projects and it's being used again in the school project for, it's also being used for this project. 2019, municipal building committee, DPW report and recommendations for replacements for the buildings that they're operating at this point in time. In fiscal year 2020, capital funding was requested for the feasibility study. Fiscal year 22, capital funding by town manager, municipal building committee, select board income was supported. At that point in time, PMA and KBA were hired early in 22. So since then, we've been working on the feasibility study process. We had the MBC recommendation for further study of three options, so, which is where we narrowed from, I believe, eight to nine options roughly. That was narrowed to three options for further evaluations. In September of 22, MBC evaluated those three narrowed options. We did a lot of public outreach in September and October to, you know, really, really follow the path that the Blanche Ames project followed and get that information out to the community, although it's not always what they want to hear because they want to know project costs and all that stuff. And it's just not available at that time, but we want everyone to know there is a project going on. In October of 22, the municipal building committee vote to approve the preferred solution for schematic design. So that option is the option that will be further developed. And then October 22 through April of 23 will be the schematic design process. April of 23 is targeting a municipal building committee vote to approve the project scope and budget. Similar process for the Blanche Ames that was followed. So we'll be working to get those estimates in at that point or earlier than that and reconciling those estimates and then developing a project budget. April to June of 23 will be the critical community outreach period and working to have that information for the taxpayers. And then targeting that summer of 2023 appropriation for, appropriation for funds via special election for the town of Easton.
So before we go by, I just wanted to really have us absorb and emphasize that we're now in the calendar year that if this project happens, we would be going to a special town meeting and a den exclusion. This has moved a lot since November of 2021, but this is now kind of the stage where we're in.
All right. So to further give some more information on schematic design and what takes place during that. So from October to February, development of the site layout will be continuing. Exterior and interior design layouts will be continuing. Detailed room layouts will be continuing. Building system selection, so MEPs, plumbing, electrical fire protection, and then identifying the full project scope. So decisions like if there's going to be the need for the traffic, traffic light at the corner across from Hilliards, very likely that that'll be a part of that discussion of this project and could be involved. So a lot of pieces are going to fall together over the next few months and have already started to fall together since October. February of 23, schematic design estimating. So we're getting close to that submission. We're about a month, month and a half away before those schematic design drawings are going to be heading to the estimators. One on behalf of PMA, one on behalf of the designer, KBA. March of 23, MBC approval of schematic design scope and budget. So that'll be just related to the construction piece. And then we will develop that full project scope and budget as well. And then again, the June 2023 local funding authorization. So really just hammering down some more key dates and giving a little bit more detail on what takes place. And I'll turn it over to Greg and through Frank.
So in terms of the findings of the study, a lot of this is not going to come as a surprise and in fact is kind of what we talked about last time. You know, all of your existing facilities have a number of issues. Those issues were kind of first identified in a report that was done in 2014. For the most part, those things remain and have compounded over time. Inevitably, you end up with facilities that are, you know, kind of outdated and not prime candidates for expansion, which is a primary issue you have in almost every facility. It's really space. Conditions can be fixed often. We're in a building that's over 100 years old, but you don't have as much of a space problem here as you do in your other facilities for public safety and DPW. They're, they're really on sites that don't allow them to expand and they're within buildings that don't really allow them to expand. So even if we were able to go in and fix them, you know, cosmetically and infrastructure-wise, we can't fix the programmatic problems that exist in those buildings because they were really designed and built for, you know, policing, you know, fire service and DPW services from about 50 years ago. So they're just not really candidates for expansion and renovations. So you've heard these things before a number of times. I won't dwell on them too much. There are detailed explanations of all of the existing conditions in the report that will come out and people are able to see. I think there's no surprise really to anybody about what is contained within the report at this point. So go on to the next slide. And just, you've seen these options a bit before, but this, the last time we were together, it was before the narrowing of options this building committee did. So the building committee narrowed to three options. It was option one, option 3B, and option 5B. And they ultimately selected option 5B. Option 5B includes a police and fire combined into a public safety building on the Gill property on Depot Street and a new fire substation on Daley's Corner on the Stone Hill property. So it was, essentially, all three options were about the same in cost, about the same in terms of scope. The first two options had renovations of fire station three. The option 5B had a new fire substation, which gave it a little bit of a different option. So just geographically what those look like, you have up on the top of the slide, this fire substation at Daley's Corner. And then kind of centralized in the center of town and also on the same site now, all three departments, administrative functions are there, as well as DPW's kind of vehicle maintenance and operations and fueling station are all centralized now in, you know, one location. So the trips back and forth and things like that are kind of minimized. Everything happens on that one site. This does include the fire maintenance program being located, co-located in the DPW so that we're not spending kind of resources building another maintenance facility and fire. It locates it in DPW where it is kind of more conducive to that activity, bit bigger space, bit more of an ability to utilize some equipment across the thing. For example, we typically would not put in a fire station maintenance facility in the DPW because of the amount of maintenance they're doing. We can do that. So what that starts to look like, and again, you know, these are kind of preliminary, early stage layouts. These will change over time as we develop the design. You know, we're working on these things now. They're already starting to change, starting to move as we kind of, you know, work the building program in, work all the site amenities into the project and get them to work within that 10-acre limit that's here on the Depot Street site. So upfront, a public safety building and back, the DPW building along with their salt storage and kind of material storage areas in the backside of the site. Again, this site does allow for that connection to, or possible future connection to recreational use that the remainder of the Gill property was bought to do. So we're looking for ways to make that, you know, a feature of this, this design, to make that most, you know, cohesive. make that most, you know, cohesive part of the project as we can. And then, just conceptually on Daley's Corner, so this is kind of the northwest corner of Stone Hill's property on Main Street, a small, about 12,000 square foot, 12,500 square foot fire substation, which will exit out onto Main Street and just a smaller kind of build-out footprint for that site, which is a little bit constrained by some wetlands and some other, you know, there's a river right of way and things like that there that we're just trying to stay out of, so the, the substation works very well there. And as we looked with the building committee at total project cost on the left-hand side of your screen, if we compare these three projects to kind of what you had as a base repair option in the school study, we looked at what a base repair and addition option would be on all of your existing facilities, even though it's not something that we could actually do, if we did have the land though, what would that cost? What would it look like to do these things? And so, that's kind of like the baseline we started with, and there are three, the three options here kind of lay out the costs. And if you can bear with us on a really detailed slide, that red is kind of the variation between our two estimators. And so, even though, you know, option five B seems to be a little bit more expensive than the other two options, in reality, they're all within the same cost range when you get to total project cost. So, it really left it down to what was the best option for the town based on what the building committee was able to see from our slides, see from the work we've done and, you know, in their judgment. So, I do just want to touch quickly on the fire response time study because we did touch on that last time we were together before the study was done. If you remember, your existing three-station model does have some, some kind of drawbacks when there is kind of an incident on the southern side of town where Station Two and Station Three often become vacant based on the response. So, that was a concern of the chiefs, I know a concern of the rest of the departments, based on how frequently they were getting calls for service when those stations were empty. So, about 20% of the time, those stations are empty based on, you know, being out on calls. So, the recovery back to Station Three is quite long from the hospital. When the ambulance from Station Three is gone, the recovery back is pretty substantial. So, during that period, you're left with an empty station. So, the call response is degraded during that time. So, on the left, kind of big purple block, is the time, is the coverage map within five minutes driving time when all three stations are covered. On the right is what happens when that Station Three is out with an ambulance response. It really retracts the coverage area from the southern side of town, which is, you know, quite a serious problem. You know, the chief is here and he's, you know, certainly more versed in this than I am. I'm sure he'll be happy to answer any questions. So, we said, well, what happens if we go to a two-station model and look at the response time there? The two-station model allows that station to recover faster because the engine recovers to that station and is not out, you know, at the hospital held up. So, by kind of moving the same amount of equipment and staff around, you're able to recover much quicker and you're able to stay covered for essentially the same coverage you had before with three stations covered without losing that kind of 20% of the time out when the ambulance is out recovering. So, all three options that the building committee looked, were able to look at, that we studied this for, essentially were the same for response time. So, again, cost-wise, kind of whatever the committee chose was kind of within the same range, response time turned out to be the same. I'd say that there were others within that eight options that we originally had that would not have had that result, but based on the ones that were picked for further study, they all ended up right around the same response time. So, the recommendation really is that either, you know, any of the three options were viable for selection. And then, just learning more on next steps, really, a lot of what's going on now is kind of our work that happens behind the scenes, moving programmatic pieces around, getting site, you know, elements to work within the footprint of the 10 acres on Daley's Corner, sorry, on Depot Street that we can work on and working with, you know, Connor and the chiefs to, and PMA to make sure that the projects represent what is necessary for all of the departments and responsible projects. This report will be out after the building committee approves it, and it will be posted to the town's website for review once finalized. And with that, any questions or comments?
Well, Jamie, we'll start with you because you're on the planning committee. So, what are your thoughts? I've watched some of these meetings, and just to reiterate for people at home, these meetings are all recorded, and if you want to go back and watch them, I've watched several of them and really fascinating discussion, great contribution by all the members.
Right. So, process has been fantastic, and I think that the continuity of service that we receive from PMA coming off such a successful project has really benefited us, them liaising and helping to coordinate and coming so well-prepared along with Greg and his team, so well-prepared all these meetings has made it really easy for us to engage in, you know, discussion. It goes pretty deep, right? We're talking about energy already and what's happening in a changing environment of heat pumps versus, you know, fossil fuels. So, it's been fantastic. We've obviously seen this already, so my questions are probably less than maybe some other folks that are seeing this for the first time, but I'm very excited and again, very excited to be on municipal buildings committee and part of this team and getting to work with them again as I did with the school planning committee. So, again, that continuity has been fantastic.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. Mark?
I actually have no questions at this time.
Craig?
I have any questions? I just think it's very, it's been very impressive to watch, and I'm glad that Jamie's part of that process.
I would agree. I'm so disappointed that we don't have any newspapers anymore because I'm trying to think of, how can we get this out to people that they, you know, in just information bites that they, they can see and understand? It's a complex project and, I mean, so much work is going into it. Again, another community project with a lot of public input, and I hope all the hundreds of people that are watching these meetings will, will think about that and reach out if you have any questions. You know, reach out to the select board, reach out to Jamie.
On that note, so, we, pulling from our experience on a lot of these bigger projects in the past five or so years, we're working with DPW right now and the design and OPM team to pull some information together for proposals for, you know, web development and public outreach, including hosting charrettes and meetings and things like that from firms we've worked with before. So, if you recall, when we were doing the Five Quarter Sewer, that was somewhat disruptive. We had a 24-hour phone line, we had a dedicated website, we had a constant contact email list, we have drone photography and a lot of much more engaging updates, and we can kind of do in-house through our kind of statutory work. So, we are getting that lined up so that in that kind of six-month grind, for lack of a better word, between once we really start to lock in on the project and getting to a town meeting, we have a team devoted to being available, having good information, having good data visualization, because that's really important for sharing online and engaging with the public. So, I think that will help quite a bit, and I think that organically you'll start to see a lot more interest once you start getting to, you know, when we've done these things before, really when it starts coming down to tax impact analysis and things like that, people really engage quite a bit. So, we, we share your thoughts and noting that absence of local papers where we'll be trying to bring some folks on board to help us out and make sure we give them our job so that everyone knows about the project.
That's great. Terrific. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight and very exciting to see how far we are into this project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Walter, we're gonna have to get you on desk here.
I'll open over there still for a little bit.
I've got some bad news for Walter as far as space available for desks.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. So, next, we have discussion and vote for our contract EFD 2023-01, Central Dodge Jeep Ram of Rainham for a 2023 Dodge Durango. So, we'll let Walter move and we'll swap out with the chief. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, everybody. Happy New Year, Chief.
Been a long time since we've seen each other in person.
Absolutely. Happy to be here. Couple of items tonight for fire department, happy that it's on your agenda. Can I take you through it?
Sure.
All right. So, first item on your agenda that we brought up was the Dodge Durango, so it was part of our apparatus maintenance plan to maximize life of our vehicles. We passed down our smaller vehicles. So, this is a 2023 Dodge Durango. The town has bought multiple of these over the years, very similar to the ones that's already purchased. It will actually start with me, and it will spend approximately four years with me and then four years in fire prevention and then four years as a staff car. So, we try to get 12 years out of these vehicles, and our mechanic, Tim Hicks, will make sure we try to get that 12 years and a reliable service with minimal cost. So, this is purchased from the Plumb County Commissioners Cooperative Procurement Contract, which is basically a state bid so that we can approve it through this process here tonight and don't have to go up with a formal proposal like if we didn't have this process. So, and I'm taking any questions on it.
Okay. We'll start with you, Jamie.
No questions. Thanks, Chief.
That price is not outfitted, right?
Correct. The appropriation at town meeting is a higher amount that covers the cost of the lights, sirens, radio, things like that. This is just to actually get the vehicle itself.
Okay.
Craig?
No questions, Chief.
Okay. Well, with that, if somebody'd like to make a motion to approve contract EFD 2023-01 in the amount of $47,438.25?
So moved. Barger?
Second. Lamb?
Barger and Lamb, all in favor. Unanimous. Excellent. So, the next item, item six, is discussion and vote intermunicipal agreement between the town of Easton and the town of Norton for fire department apparatus maintenance services. This is an interesting one.
Yes, absolutely. So, my previous attendance with you all was when we had West Bridgewater and Rehoboth for the same thing, and now we have Norton. So, we're starting that we're doing program. Norton, slightly smaller as far as activity than Easton, but they're still busy and their trucks run a lot, and maintenance is very hard to come by for the fire service at this point in time. Just getting vehicles in with staffing shortages can take weeks. We'll send a truck out prior to having our own mechanic. We would send a truck out and it would sit outside two, three, four weeks, depending on where it was and what it needed, before they even looked at it. And then they would look at it and say, oh, we need a part, and put it back outside for two or three, four more weeks waiting for that part. Sometimes the truck could have come back and it could have run, especially if you had a mechanic to put the proverbial Band-Aid on it, wait for the part, you know, safely of course. So, the fire departments have realized that we get a couple of something better. Sometimes we can do things better ourselves, and this is what we're doing, and Norton's joining on, and I would envision a couple more departments probably in the long run before we stabilize with those, the capacity of our facility at the Bay Road Fire Station, Station Three. And it's also a bit of a growing learning what each department's gonna utilize us for because West Bridgewater, for example, has somebody who can do their oil changes, so they wouldn't use us for that, but any of the heavier means we can't, they can't do so we would. So, as each department, we get a feel what it's gonna be, we'll learn how much more our capacity is. Somebody utilizes just when the trucks break, somebody utilizes for preventative maintenance, and we see that more often. And then, we'll fill that out. So, it's like you call it a starting of a new business. We're gonna figure out the demand for us and expand as we can, and Norton is the latest expansion.
Chief, remind us, I believe that part of this, this was part of some budget adjustments we made to start in-housing some of these mechanic services, and as part of that, we adopted through town meeting a revolving fund for these mechanic services that we're offering to our neighbors that we can vent different to if we have certain things we still need to farm out.
That's correct. So, at the town meeting a year ago, if I lost track of my head and mind timeline-wise, we approved that revolving fund, and that would be where the, when departments pay us for their services, they would go in there, we'll pay the parts out of that for their trucks. It also allows us to make sure we separate the cost of maintaining our fleet from other departments, because we don't want to commingle and have these taxpayer funds being utilized to maintain other departments' trucks. But at the same time, we will have a profit, if you will, over on these maintenance, and we'll be able to use that for equipment and offsetting our own maintenance as we go forward. And as we learn how these departments can utilize us, we'll be able to actually build that savings into our own budget by keeping our own maintenance costs going up more than they would, or even perhaps reducing them as we get bigger.
So, after just looking at the plans for the new, the new site for municipal buildings, does that take into account this kind of work and possible expansion or?
So, even without this, using the other departments for revenue stream, we would need some type of maintenance facility, and doing that with DPW made sense. But this new facility, the fire section of it would allow us to expand, which is, which is a nice thing because the, the area we have at Station Three is very limited. We can't even put jacks into, next to the trucks to lift the trucks up or anything because it's just, it's just so tight narrow-wise. So, by having even just what we need for Easton, we would be able to expand, and their sky is really the limit right now because if we have a bigger facility through whatever method, I can get a whole lot of business. And, you know, at some point, the potential's there if we have the facility, the potential's there to just turn our own maintenance costs to zero for our own fleet. We could fully offset, I completely believe that, that we can make our own maintenance cost zero long-term. This isn't next year or the year after, but, and that's contingent upon a facility, because we'll, we won't be able to do that with the facility we have now, we just don't have the bandwidth space-wise. You can always add the staff, but we just don't have the space.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but currently as it stands, the mechanic bay in Station Three, depending on the vehicle, and if it's a fire apparatus or open, it needs to be pulled out of the station because of the hood, it's not really a hood, it's the whole cab, right? Can't lift forward in the garage, so you'd have to be doing that outside. So, that's, that's like, there's just such significant space challenges.
Correct. There are some trucks that would be currently away instead of, as a conscious point, that we can't actually open the hood. Some we can, depends on which one it is. The ladder truck in particular is a challenge. We're working with DPW to try to modify our maintenance bay a little bit to allow us to open the hood of the ladder truck inside, but for, it's a 1999 and for its entire life, it's always had to be put outside to be worked on and will need work on. So, we're hoping to make those improvements, but yeah, it, we have the talent and we have the desire to have people join us, now we need the space, and this could be a really special, I would equate this to the maintenance equivalent of CEMRA that it could be if we could create the space.
So, I remember at your interview, we were talking about, you know, we like our department heads to think outside the box and, you know, we're very excited to hear some blue-sky thinking, even if it sounds like something that we can't do. What are, what are some really great ideas? And this is really one of those great ideas because it's, first of all, if it helps us save money to the budget, that's terrific, but it also puts the control of getting repairs done according to your timeline. It's more efficient to do it that way, and if we can bring on resources to help other communities, the regionalization is really important. I know that from what I've seen over the years, the way that the fire and police work with other towns is really very collaborative, so this just seems like a natural next step. So, this started with a little bit of a seed of an idea and grew to this really incredible solution for many different aspects of it. So, I really just want to thank you for bringing that forward and, you know, Connor nurturing this through however it happens along the way, and it's really a great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very excited about it. It's near and dear to me.
Good.
How much do you think you will generate this year?
That's hard to say. Connor has some conversations about that because, you know, we have the three departments that are smaller, and they're still trying to figure out what they're gonna do themselves and what they're gonna have us do. So, I think until, and the other thing is, you know, they're just saying, and I say it semi-jokingly, but fire service is often, you know, 200 years of tradition unimpeded by progress. So, the way we do things, we think that that's the way we're gonna continue to do them. And it's a behavior change to say, hey, we're gonna send this fire truck to another fire department to get it fixed versus the shop to, you know, where the E1s or the pierces or the brains that we deal with. And I think as they learn and build that trust, we'll see an increase, but for now, we're kind of the novelty, where the new thing, the new idea, only Foxcar was the only town that does it, and it took them years to build theirs up. So, I don't, I can't put a number on it yet, I'm not trying to beat around the question. I just, I don't, I don't know. It will grow. It will grow. But I think it's going to be, if we don't get a lot from the three we have now, we'll add four and we'll add five until some point where we have, we're full. We saturate what we have and we'll have a revenue stream at that point.
So two, two, here you go. Just one more question. How did you say you're doing here?
So I would say that I have a collaboration with our Foxborough brother-in-law to, because why reinvent the wheel? They took a look at what shops are charging, which are now upwards of $150 to $170 an hour and 200 if it's a specialty. And take a look at what our costs are internally to run it. And we settled on $95 an hour with a 2% escalator every year. And then, so we would, we still show profit on that, even if the work had to be done in overtime. But at the same time, there's substantial enough savings to make people interested in utilizing us. And the other aspect that brings that in is not just with the cost, but fire chiefs who can call a fire chief who happens to be a mechanic and talk about their trucks and come see their trucks. There's a lot of benefits there. So they have the savings. They can have some trust there that the, that we're not going to take their truck and put it outside for two weeks. So when you take a pen to back the, the cost savings plus the communication and trust that you can get with that, we think we have a winning model.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I agree, it's fantastic. Foxborough today, how many communities do they serve?
They serve Norfolk, Franklin and Rentham. So those are the communities they serve. So those are sizable because Franklin's a little bigger than we are. Rentham and Norfolk are combined probably close to us. So they're, they're busy. And their model's a little different. They're in the process of, we have a full-time civilian mechanic. They utilize firefighters who work on shift. And then they do repairs on overtime, on their off time. They're looking to move people to days because there's a lot of business and it's hard to do that. And they started out a few years ago with that model and it worked until they got bigger. And it's like anything, they have to scale up and they're trying to get somebody who are their firefighters, maybe to go to days. And that will be, that will be how they expand themselves. They have a, their facility was built in 2006, but it's a modern facility. It has a gantry, curtain and everything inside it, what we would have if we go forward without building a project. So they could take on a little bit more of the heavier stuff than we can at this point, but we'll be right in the bottom.
That was my last question is as we bring these other communities on and you know what apparatus they have, obviously. So you already know, there's some they won't send, right? And it's just, I don't know, if there's a ladder truck and you couldn't do any work on it inside Station Three because of our spacing issues today.
So I think, so there's a lot of moving pieces there, but we try to be a good facilitator for it. It's there departments where they go, we can do the repairs. And in fact, being a part of a Foxborough is part of our plan for our departments that work with us. So if there's something that we need to work with, you know, to get a truck inside of Foxborough, pro-servor repair to get a truck on, back on the road, then let's work with them. As much as we want to offset our costs, the primary goal is to provide a good service to these other departments as well, so they can get, protect their populations. And then we benefit as a result. So even if a repair goes to Foxborough instead of us, that's okay if we couldn't handle it. But that trucking back on the road protected the community better. So I, I don't, as much as I joke and say the competition, I give us more as partnership.
No, I think it's fantastic. The timing's great because you're building the trust and relationships now. And if we continue down this pathway with the municipal buildings project and all goes well, the timing couldn't be better. You've built these relationships and now you're rolling out a state-of-the-art facility to do the work.
That facility would be a game changer overnight. It would be exponential in our ability to expand.
I can imagine.
That's where the true offset to our budget would really show is when we can actually have a true facility and put an 8,000 pound truck up in the air, six feet and work on it in a way. That's when you see our maintenance budget start to really disappear.
That's when your community's knocking on your door.
Right.
If you're involved.
Absolutely. You know, this is, for me, this is a, this is a, you know, five, even regardless of the outcome of the building project, this is a five or six-year process to really develop it and get established and make it a financial win for the town. So it's, it's still, we're still in the city. We're still, we're still just crawling. But, you know, next year we'll be walking, next year after that we'll start jogging, and the year after that we'll be running.
It's this forward thinking, right? It's the same thing that brought the school project to fruition in, in the eyes of the public, the cost avoidance involved. But we shouldn't forget to advertise this component as we're going out there to educate people on why we're in this municipal buildings project, right?
Exactly. There's actually a few of the kind of charades and planning things we did that to their credit. Citizens that have, a handful that I was at specifically brought that up and said they thought that it would be a compelling argument to highlight the cost avoidance through having more appropriate mechanic facilities and things like that, being able to do it in-house for a fraction of the cost of what you have to pay in the private sector. There's other incremental benefits as well, risk avoidance of not having to have our staff, the cost avoidance of not having staff driving on the clock to whatever place is available, which is a, sometimes feels like a shirking ice cap trying to find one. So there's, there's a ton of upside and benefit there. It ultimately results in a higher amount of uptime for our emergency response vehicles at a better cost.
Last piece I'll say is inflation aside and spicing was aside, finding mechanics moving forward in the next five, 10 years as more and more civilian vehicles go electric, where we're not going to have the luxury with a ladder truck or not early on, maybe much beyond that with the mechanics and the number of mechanics available to do this kind of work, we're going to continue to cook it up.
The, the mechanics that we want to have, the quality, the caliber of the cannon, we're very fortunate. DPW was as well without my caliber, my quality. If I may, there's one point to connect this all is you were all so knowledgeable and lived through the development of CEMREC. If you recall in the beginning of CEMREC, when Mansfield and Foxborough joined in Foxborough Station, before the building was built out to bring the other two communities and one of which was us, that was kind of their start. That's where we are, aware that the two of the four communities waiting for the facility to be built out. And then once CEMREC opened in their high rock facility, we all joined. And now we're looking to see if they can expand. So I really, that, that model is something that I hold dear. I think it's important. I think it's a good model. I think the government can do good work and we can do it. So hopefully, given us a class, we can get a facility.
Fantastic. I love that you brought that up, Jamie, because that really is a true problem with the trades. You know, anybody knows that anybody trying to get a plumber or a carpenter or electrician, it's really hard and the state's making a big push to put in all kinds of workforce training and involve to get people to, you know, be trained in those jobs. Mechanic is right in there with it and I didn't even think of that. So that's really a great point.
We're actually going to bring in, it's in, the discussions are happening. I haven't had a chance to bring it to town hall, but we're looking maybe to try to help out Southeastern with a co-op with our mechanic. They go through the process of legalities and liability and all that stuff. But they approached us about, can we try to bring on? And we think we'd be an actual exciting co-op because they would get to work with fire trucks. Absolutely. You know, other than airplanes, in my opinion, fire trucks are the next people we'll start to work on, so.
That's an amazing idea. You know, the Workforce Investment Board locally, they got a, a school bus or like a bus from Brockton Area Transportation. They worked with Southeastern Regional to retrofit it. And they put mobile Chromebooks in it. So it's a learning lab and they take it to different places. But it was a real collaboration between, you know, BAT and workforce and Southeastern Regional. And it was an amazing project. So many benefits to it besides the obvious benefits to the public of being able to use the, use the equipment.
They can do a lot up there. It's impressive school.
Yes, that's great. All right, well, that's exciting. If there's no other questions, if I could get a motion to, to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the Town of Easton and the Town of Norton for the Fire Department Apparatus Maintenance Services.
So moved, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you.
Have a great day, Chief.
You too.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion and vote for Contract IT 2023-03 for Wally Computer Associates, 19 Dell Optiplex 7,000 computers and six Dell Precision 3660 computers.
Thank you, Dottie.
Connor?
Attached in your pack is a memo from Mike Del Tano, Information Systems Manager. This is a standard contract that we do each year. This is part of our cyclical replacement of computers across the town, DPW and Police Department. We try to keep those on a four to five year replacement cycle. This is for 25 of them. Wally is a computer contractor that we purchased from off of a state certified bid list. Funding for this was appropriated at town meeting and I recommend its award.
Any questions? Nope.
No questions.
Okay. So I would take a motion to approve Contract IT 2023-03, Wally Computer Associates, and the value is $30,927.
So moved, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next is the acceptance of the resignation from Matt Whitman, the Economic Development Council. His term expired June 30th, 2023. We did receive a letter of resignation from Matthew. Mark and I both know him pretty well from being on the Economic Development Council, but I'm going to see if you'd like to say a couple of words about him, Mark?
Yes, Matt is leaving us in the dust. Matt is, he's moving on with his, with his career and his contributions to economic development were above and beyond. If you see the website, that is Matt. He, he contributed considerably, not just in meetings, but while we were all busy at work making money for our families, he was actually working on economic development websites. Matt would be greatly missed. He did a fantastic job while he was there and I wish him luck and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Agreed. Matt brought a lot of great energy, a lot of perspective, and he will have big shoes to fill. All right, excellent. Well, if we vote to accept his resignation, I need a motion, a second, and then that's a roll call.
So moved, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer and Lamb, we'll start with you, Jamie. His last name's Whit, Whitman.
Thank you. Steben Whitman.
Lamb Whitman.
Fulgenetti Whitman?
Bajer Whitman.
Okay. So there'll be an opening on the Economic Development Council for people to watch for soon. Item nine of vote to appoint Charlene Fournier to the Board of Registars with a term expiration of March 31st, 2026. We also have a memo from the town clerk advising that the Republican Town Committee voted to recommend the appointment of Charlene Fournier as the Republican Committee Representative to the Board of Registars. The appointment has a term expiration of March 31st, 2026. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
Somebody like to make a vote, a second, and this will also be a roll call?
So moved, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer, Lamb?
Steben's Fournier.
Lamb Fournier.
Fulgenetti Fournier?
Bajer Fournier.
Terrific. And we thank Charlene for taking up that position. Next is a town administrator update regarding the Eastern, I'm sorry, Assistant Town Administrator update. I think I got to get my glasses checked. For the Eastern Citizens Academy Spring 2023. Michael, if you want to talk about this fun and exciting project?
Sure do, yeah. It is really fun and exciting. There's a lot, a lot of fun stuff tonight, but this is particularly fun for me. So really excited to be bringing back the Citizens Academy for our second year. I think the board is pretty familiar with it, but just for the public's benefit who may not be, the Citizens Academy is a nine-week up-close view of local government. Participants take a deep dive into all aspects of town government through a variety of classes and interactive activities. And that includes everything from hands-on with the Board of Health and the Plane Department to spraying hoses and, you know, moving the ladder on the ladder truck at the fire department. It's pretty, pretty cool stuff. It's a way residents to learn about all aspects of Easton's municipal government. It's held one evening per week at various locations throughout the town. Last year, we met at Town Hall, DPW, Fire and Police Department, Frothingham Hall, schools and the library. And this year, we're hoping to add a field trip to CEMREC because we think that's important for people to see. We had hoped to do it last year, but we still had some COVID issues flaring up, so it just didn't work out. The program is designed to expose residents to the various town departments to get that understanding. It also serves as a town, a way for town officials to connect directly with Easton residents and to allow participants to discover new opportunities for public involvement and the role they can play in town government. We do spend a lot of time essentially recruiting for all of our board and committee volunteer opportunities. And I think it was really eye-opening for the participants to know all that happens behind the scenes. People don't realize how much volunteer participation drives what's done in this town. So it's a really great opportunity for them to see that. The program is open to Easton residents 18 and older and the first preference is given to registered voters in the community. Applications will be available, it's an electronic application by the end of January. And we pushed that out, social media, website, TownCrier, as we talked about, unfortunately not the newspaper anymore. And then we will select participants and notify them by the end of February. In fact, we already have people who heard about the program last year who are on a waiting list to get the application this year. So people, people are already pretty excited about it. And this is just a kind of a sample schedule based off of last year. So you can see, we'll, we'll meet each Monday. We do take off school vacation week because it poses a lot of conflicts. We do have a quote-unquote final exam by attendance at annual town meeting. We do meet, I meet early with the group and kind of go through town meeting, explain all the players, how things work. And last year was kind of interesting. It was a really active town meeting for them to participate in. So it was pretty, pretty neat. And then we follow that with the graduation at the Select Board Meeting, which you may recall you presented certificates. And then we do our kind of overview of all boards and committees for them as well and encourage them to participate and continue to be involved in town government. This is, part of Citizens Academy is my goals and objectives, provide my performance reviews. I could be lying to you today on some of this. However, these are quotes from people who participated last year. I won't read through them all, but, you know, you can see people were really excited. They really enjoyed it. You'll see comments, everything from, you know, their eyes were open to the extremely poor condition of the DPW facilities to what a good steward the town is with the public's money. So I think people really did get a lot out of it. They appreciated it. We got a lot of positive feedback. And as I said, we already have people who, you know, told friends about the program. We had, one of the participants, her husband, just showed up one day and said, hey, do you mind if I just tag along? I was really interested in this. And we said, of course. The group got a, a early tour of the, the school as it would be constructed last year. So you get some of those behind the scene peaks that not everybody gets. So we are really excited. It's a really awesome way to educate residents, build positive relationships and increase communication between us and the residents. So appreciate the board's support and Connor's support in kicking us off and just ask the public to please stay tuned, look for the application. And if they have any questions, they can reach out to our office.
Great. Any comments?
Just a couple of questions about attendance. So you had 20 participants last year.
We did.
And this year, expect to exceed, you might double the number. There were, maybe 40 applicants. Can you expand based on what you learned last year? Could you have more than 20?
Yeah, I think we can this year. I think we're prepared to do that. I don't think we could get too much bigger, just come out some of the space and some of the hands-on activities. But I think if we get more than 20 applicants, we'll, we'll try to get as many as we can in.
And how was attrition over the nine, nine sessions?
It was actually great. We did lose one person due to some personal commitments, but otherwise, we lost a few people here and there, again, were sick, family issues. One of the things that we offered though, we're going to reach out this year, is we kept a list of people who missed specific sessions, and we're going to invite them to participate in that session this year. People actually asked for that because they were disappointed that they missed the tour of the fire department or didn't get to see the DPW facility, so we'll invite those people back.
Great. Last question. Mean age, was it a lot of retirees or did you get a good kind of demographic mix?
It was an awesome mix. We had all the way from a, I think it's a very recent high school graduate all the way to seniors, someone who, who lived in town just a few months, but really wanted to get involved, and we also had lifelong residents. So it's a really awesome mix of people, yeah. And a range of involvement, people who never had gone to a town meeting, all the way people who have sat on important committee. So it was a really neat range of, of experience as well.
And a good gender diversity.
Yes, absolutely, yes, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Outstanding, the, you know, our call to graduation back in the spring?
Yeah.
And the energy and the excitement and everybody's feedback, they were, they were over the moon, and I think what every single person said in paraphrasing was, it is so much more than what I, what I expected going into it. And they couldn't wait to tell everybody about it because it was one of those where people were thinking, you know, they wanted to share with people, but you have to do this. Like this was so eye-opening and I didn't know, I didn't know, I had no idea. But they were, they were very excited and your hard work was, was noticed by everyone.
I appreciate it, and really, the hard work especially goes to the department heads who, you know, prepare and put on these presentations, so really appreciate everyone pitching in on this.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, I thought it was a great opportunity, I thought it was a great idea. I talked to a number of, of the participants after the fact, of just running into them in town, and, and their enthusiasm and their better understanding of how town government works, and then talking to their friends, I mean, that's just a great way to expand the knowledge base out there about what we do and how this town works. And so I'm looking forward to it again.
Great. It is really exciting, and, you know, I think you mentioned it before, and it's been come up a few times tonight specifically about the volunteers really make things happen in small communities like this, and to be able to get that inside look at how, how things work, really feel connected to the people that, that are doing the work for staff, you know, in the town, it's, it's really, it's really awesome. So, you know, I know people think that this is all a bed of roses for, for, for us all the time, and, and a lot of times it is, but that, that was really like a feel-good night when, just to listen to the enthusiasm for the people that got to participate and they were so happy, and we stayed for a long time after the meeting even, just kind of chatting with people, so. It was, some of those things will always be things that I remember, like real highlights of over the years. That was, that was a great innovative thing, and I'm happy that you're going to keep it going.
Great, thank you.
All right, excellent. Now we're into the minutes. The acceptance of the minutes dated December 19th, 2022?
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Executive Session Minutes, from time to time, we vote to accept the minutes and then we'll release those minutes when the subject has been resolved. So we have Executive Session Minutes for release, 12-2, 2019, 2-25, 2019, 2-11, 2019, and 1-28, 2019. These have already been accepted and we just need to make a motion to release those minutes.
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And next, the Executive Session Minutes for Acceptance and Release are November 7th, 2022, October 24th, 2022, October 11th, 2022, June 27th, 2022, and March 28th, 2022. So I would take a motion to accept and release these minutes.
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Let me see. Town Administrator notes?
I have none, thank you.
Select Board Notes. Jamie, start with you.
I'd just point out that January 15th is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s actual birthday,